We'll call this meeting the Ways and Means Committee together today, Tuesday, May 3, 2016, at 4:05. Deanne, would you please call the roll?
Here.
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 Yes, ma'am.
Here.
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 Yes.
Thank you, ma'am. We've had an all, all had an opportunity to review, review the minutes of April the 5th.
So moved.
Worked. Moved and supported. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Under petitions and communi-, or public input, at this time we'll allow for public input, anybody that would like to address the Ways and Means Committee, step to the podium and you have an oppor-, state your name, Mr., Mike?
Mike Bristow, Bangor Township. I'd like to talk about things as the way they were. I'll give you the re-, digest version. Tobico Marsh used to live there for about 26, 27 years on Little Clancy Beach. So what too much I didn't see there. When I got drains, pictures of drains going in, I think there's five or six. I got pictures going back to 1954 showing the way the opening was, all the way up to the present. When I get to that point, this is what everybody remembers, is this. That's what it used to look like in 1974. Now, we can go on and talk about all the stuff that has changed over the course of time. Everything pretty much is staying the same all the way until about 1993. The 98 picture shows a change. You're all gonna get a copy of all this. That's why I'm gonna rush through, 'cause I know you're busy. But in the Resource Management Group study, which is right here, the complete study, in the scoping meeting, which I was part of the steering committee, it says in here, "The existing opening was changed in 1993 by the park manager." That was Terry Sheen at the time. Also, the ditches were filled in. Right here. Got all of the graphs, charts you want, even a DVD. If somebody wants to copy it, they can see the way it was. My concern is, keeping yous all informed and taking up your time, I just soon if Deanne would be so kind tomorrow, I would come by and drop this off, 'cause I know she's busy. I will let her copy and explain it, so it does not get mixed up or misunderstanding. There's also a law here that talks about willful neglect. Any elected official has a job duty. If there's a neglect on their part, they can be held accountable. We can see that in the DEQ. Do I trust them? No. I can go back and look in the same charting right here. And I can go back and show you how the Hartley landfill used to look and what it looks like today, through the course of time, how the water flowed, all right here. Pictures don't lie. Only people interpreting the pictures. Pretty, you have to be awful blind not to see a ditch, when it's showing water going in the ditch. It's been there.
Mike, haven't they contained that landfill?
The landfill started, the pictures here start in 1954. 1955 is when they started. And you look at the pictures here, you're looking at them starting the Hartley landfill and not having any slurry walls or containment until 1983. If you read the scoping report, you'll find out that they were not even allowed to go into the back area. This was in 2002, Resource Management Group. So I'll be, I'll be politically correct as I can. I think there's somebody, somewhere being less than forthcoming with information. 'Cause I sat in the meeting and I was asked, "Okay, invite who you want." And when I got to the meeting, they didn't show up. The answer I got is, "We don't need those other people. We're gonna get resolved now." It's called diffusing a hostile audience. That's what they do best at. We need a town hall meeting. Need a town hall meeting to discuss the contamination and stuff that's in this area. TB5 announced that their stanser rates are high in this area, Bay County, Tuscaloosa, and Lupier. I'd like to get little answers out of the DEQ. Minus gag order. I would like all the elected officials to sit here and be part of this, still. I'd like to get down to the bottom, so we can all rest assured that kids coming, growing up today and tomorrow are gonna have a future here. Projected on one of the groups that does studies, we are supposed to be somewhere around 120,000 people by the year 2020. I think we're gonna be a little shy of that. This place is good for contamination, 'cause we're at the end of the line. You've got a confined disposal facility in a residential area. How can you do that? Well, we can look at the middle grounds, that's the same thing, but not quite. But we need to get answers. Are there any questions?
Commissioner Krieger.
Yep. So Mike, is there any information from EPA that talks about or shows any kind of risk with the Hartley-Hartley?
The EPA does not handle it, because it's given to SDA Holdings. You have to go under the Nuclear Regulatory Commission site, and then go to the Adams Report Library, and then you look it up that way. And if you want the DEQ agent that has the best information, his name is Michael Jury.
Right, he's with the DEQ?
Works with the DEQ.
Okay, thank you.
So, other than maybe somebody making the public aware of what ever is there, and if you think there's something, and I don't know, and I'm not disputing what you say, but is there a way to remedy if there is some contaminants?
If there's contaminants, when you look at a permitting process underneath the signature, it says the person signing the permit is responsible, they're responsible party. That's where it starts. Whether they move on in life or not, it's irrelevant. That's where it starts. Did you check it out? No. If you did, where's the papers? Take my finger and put it on that report. Can't do it. They can be on a micro fish, can be anywhere. But I've seen reports disappear off the internet while I'm even reading them.
Then, eh, go ahead, Ernie.
I think, as far as our community, it's probably gonna be a good idea to make some type of contact with Lansing, and have some representative from Lansing, or maybe this Michael Jury, to come before the board next month and, and answer questions. Is there an issue? Has it been taken care of? Or is everything all hunky-dory, as they would, they would claim? Just like when we had an issue with the amount of fish that were being caught, the, a person from Fish and Wildlife and DNR came in and addressed that situation. I would think that they would at least have the courtesy of coming in and, and talking and telling us their side of the story also.
There's always two sides to every story.
Correct.
What other than that? What we can take and look at other stories as well, Hartley-Lansville. That was never truthful. You know that, and I know that.
Well, and that's, that's part of what I'm, I'm getting to. There is two sides of the story, but there's plenty of footprints out, or fingerprints, of what actually is there and what isn't there. What it does take is the time that I know that you've put in to find that material, which is within their own files. It's just that sometimes they don't wanna look. But I think, saying now, we need to bring up the awareness of the possibility of having something that's, that's not healthy in our area, or hasn't been taken care of. It's time to say, "Okay, let's look at it, and let's look at it closely, and let's have the information to say it is or it isn't." No problem.
If I break the law, I'm going to get told that I'm breaking the law. They're gonna give me a piece of paper that says, "This is the law I broke." The EPA works the same way. When you go onto the EPA ECHO site, you can put in your zip code number, and you can find out just how bad your area is. You can find out all of the regulations that any particular place broke. And when it goes three solid years of breaking the regulations, what does that tell you? Incompetency or involvement? Which one is it? Either we have incompetent leadership, or we have leaders who are involved. I can go back and say, "Here's a report here." This one here, you're gonna get the copy of this one as well. This tells you all the maps, everything on the contamination production. This is off the DEQ's own website, not mine. I didn't create this. But you know, we, we have a memory about that long, when we remember this stuff. All of a sudden, it all gets better. Cancer, right here. Can't make this stuff up. Here's two reports on Ducks Unlimited. Calling those people that are just in the Bangor Township area, there was 20 some, not one of them knew anything about an acquisition of any of the property for conservation easements. Now, I find that awful strange, that somebody can be paid, last time I looked, which was this morning, there was a million 200, or $1,200,000,000 spent for Ducks Unlimited over the course of their time, for acquisition of conservation easements. Yet, people don't even know them.
Mike, I think-
You got, you got property, and I come over to you and I say, "Kim, I wanna, I wanna take and put your property in conservation easement, your 80 acres. You can't touch it." "Well, no, I, I don't wanna do that." "Well, you're below the 585." "Well, that's flood plain mark. That's not a wet landmark." And there's a lot of interpretation that's going south, right now.
You know, I don't think we have a problem asking whether it's the DNR, the DEQ, the EPA, or whoever it would be to come in and answer some questions, but if you could, you know, categorize what questions that you have, and give them an opportunity to see them, and then I'd be more than happy to sit in on some of those meetings and just, for the, for, for our own purpose of education, find out what is actually out there. Now, but, you know, to be fair to them as well, you need to get with us, or Ernie, or the board, and, and itemize what questions you have, and then we could find out who would be the individual, or the agency that would come and respond to those questions. I don't think we have a problem with that here.
No.
But, if, but what you need to do, Mike, is to put it all on paper, A, B, and C, because we're talking on different things, acquisition, we're talk, acquisition of land, we're talking on contaminants, we're talking on Hartley, we're talking on the middle grounds. Whatever inform, whatever you think you need to have answered, categorize it, and give it to us, and we'll request, I don't think we're gonna get it next month, but you get it to us, and we'll try to find the agency that would be willing to come in and sit down and discuss this, so for the general public.
Town hall meeting is gonna be the best way of going, where everybody in this, this community can be invited to come.
But you need to get that information, so that those folks know what they're coming in to, to talk about, okay? So that, that information can be parlayed to whatever agency that may be, you know, that may be participating, or that may be, may have been participated in that. So, to make it more easy to get those DEQ, DNR, whoever it might be, to come in, I think you have to get it all organized a little bit, and we can probably go from there and request, have a town hall, bring in those people that are, are going to be integral to the, to the discussion. We can do that?
There's too much I haven't done already.
I know, but-
I think you're well aware of that.
I am. But if we want this meeting, this town hall, to be educational for the whole community, I think the, you need to find out who is coming in, under what conditions are they going to, or under what issues are they gonna discuss, to be fair to them.
The issues can be left in general, but if you're going to give them all the information ahead of time, I don't see that as fair.
I don't think we're giving them information. We're only giving them topic.
I'm going to their website, and that's going to their own website by their own rules, is the question that I have.
Well, how would you best determine how, how we would address this?
How would I determine it?
Yes.
Have a computer site, and have it so it can be pushed up, and whoever knows the website, you just tell them the website, they put it up, and say, "Here, let's go to this one. Now, explain this." Not to accuse them of anything, can you explain this? Let everybody sees that website, what that information says. I've been through this rodeo before, with Tim Burcham, Sue Matlock. I had a school superintendent backdoor me. Three public officials backdoor me. I'm a little skittish, if you don't mind.
Commissioner Tiller.
Yeah, Mike, you know, in my lifetime in education and, in government, we need these, we need, if we're gonna have a forum, or we're going to hold something, we're gonna, if we want an answer to something, we have to have a direct question. And we can have a public forum on a direct question or a direct issue. But to be all over the map, nope, and, and most of the people that are in the positions now, weren't in the position when the decisions were all made, that made it what it is today. And the only way to change something is to get the people in the room who can make a difference with the question that they can actually answer. And, and they may come in defensive, I get that. They may come in on offensive, I get that. But I, I would tend to think that if we have a town hall meeting, it's on one topic at a time, maybe four or five town, town hall meetings have to be held. I get that. But they, we should focus on one specific question at a time, that we can answer one at a time. I, I, like you, would like to get them all fixed at one time. But you're talking, it's such a big piece of government, that it's gonna be very, very time-consuming and, and, I think, difficult to achieve, if we specifically focus on Hartley first, or whatever one. I think that's, that's, that's the disc, that's the, the angle we should take, and bring the players in the room that actually can make the decisions, and actually can maybe do something about this, and see if they actually have an interest in doing something. And if they don't, and they're, and they're being negligent in their duties, well, then that, then we've got something on somebody that we can actually, where we can actually hold somebody accountable. But, and speaking in generics, doesn't bring us to what you want, or I don't think what we would want either. We need to have, I think, one topic at a time. And, you know, I'm happy to sit on those meetings as well, to address these things. And I, you've been doing this a long time, and we're really tired of doing this, because, you know, and, and I love your passion, because you, like you said, you've been beat up over the long course of time, trying to get answers, trying to get solutions. But I think you actually have a board here that actually would work with you, to at least make another attempt at doing this. And, but I think we're gonna want focus on one top, one of the topics at a time. And so I'm, I'm with Kim, is that, let's, let's put together the questions you really want answered, and get those to Deanne, and then we can, we can collaboratively work together to probably put together either the focus group or team to work on the solutions that we all wanna see going forward.
Tell you what I'm gonna do. I'm gonna come in, I'm gonna let Deanne, I'm gonna burden you. I apologize for that, with all this. Let you copy, but I'm gonna take the time to explain what everything is. You can make as many copies as you need, give them to whoever. At that point, I will take it up to the federal level. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mike. Anybody else like to address the Ways and Means Committee?
Seeing no one coming, oh, sorry. Go ahead, Joe. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Last couple meetings, we've had conversations about drainage on Loria Road, is my understanding. I presented to you, to the members, a copy of a 1964 flow map, done by my predecessor's predecessor, Bill Rosebush Senior. We actually have these maps for the entire county, section by section. They're incredibly valuable. What this little flow map will show you is that there has been no change in the drainage pattern of Loria Road for at least 50 years. The ditches are where they were, and the flow has not changed. So, some of the concerns that were brought to you last month, the, the water was, is flowing the exact same way. Unfortunately, some of the property owners built houses and dammed the water behind their house. That's the whole story. I also gave you a copy of a memo. I talked to the specific property owner who was here last month, five years ago, and told him if he got the water from the backyard to the front yard, we'd take care of it. It's all, 'cause I, I can't, it's not within the legal ability of the Drain Commissioner to address private property. So, despite, I think, what was suggested, I think we've been doing our job, and we have been responsive. We have no problem dipping out that drain, if that's what the commission wants. We did it two or three years ago. We don't know it's, it's gonna help the circumstance they've brought to you. In fact, we know it won't, but we're happy to cooperate. I will take care of one of the issues that was brought up by Mr. Bristow, and that's the outlet of the Tobico Marsh. It, it was changed in 1993. I was on the beach the day it changed, as a young township supervisor, I think I was a teenager, probably I was a teenager then. That was because the Corps of Engineers required it, not as a mitigation, as a remediation, a legal requirement. Terry Sheen and I couldn't do a thing about it. It was a directive by the Corps of Engineers as to how that looks today. Not, not a conspiracy. Everybody was trying to do their job. We continue to work with the State Park, to try and find ways to improve that circumstance, 'cause we do know it's not only impacting the folks on the marsh, but it's actually, actually impacting our drains as well. But as you can imagine, we have no jurisdiction over the beach, or the, the marsh, or the lagoon itself. We, there are some tubes out there, Ernie would be real familiar with that, where you can take your car to get, or your RV to get out to the beach, out to the water. We're, we're trying to work with the, the park to figure out how big those tubes we, you know, what we could do to improve that, because that's basically the only outflow. But our jurisdiction is limited. So, you know, from the perspective of the Drain Office, we are happy to help. We've been of help. I believe we continue to do our, our job and our work, to the extent possible. And if the residents who suggested we weren't, are, are willing to work, you know, if they do their part, we'll do our part. And that's been the, our, our ongoing message and approach throughout the county. So I'm happy to answer any questions, but none of us in Bay County have or ever will be happy with the current beach situation. But I can, I can tell you that it wasn't up to us way back in the early 1990s.
That's one question answered.
There you go. Terry was about as happy about it as I was, when we were standing on the beach with the Corps of Engineers, and they're telling us what exactly is gonna happen next.
All right. Anybody having questions for Joe?
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anybody else would like to address Ways and Means? Seeing no one coming forward under petitions and communications, we have, under A, the President of the Bay County Fair and Youth Exposition. I believe we were gonna refer that.
Yep. I'm making motions, refer it back to administration.
Moved and supported. Any questions? All right, we'll refer that back to administration? No other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. B, the Director of Environmental Affairs and Community Development, this is a DNR Frag Mightys grant?
So moved.
Moved and supported. Any questions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, Ernie.
Under C, from the Health Director, this is Amendment Number Three to the CPBC Agreement.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any questions? Joel, while you're here, maybe you could, you know, we get, I think what, maybe you can give a quick explanation, and this is all good stuff, because we get more money. But you might, you must start out with a certain amount of money, and then over the course of the fiscal year, is it depending upon how much-
Yep.
-services we provide, or how much money the state has, that we would get an additional amount of dollars?
Sometimes it's a little of both.
Okay.
Or it's the lack of money that the state has, and they will be telling us that they will be cutting funding down the road. In this circumstance, these are, I think, for the most part, additional funds, especially for the WIC. These are additional new funds that have come through the federal government, and they're making them available to local health departments.
So we're gonna be able to provide more services?
Yes.
All right. Anybody have any questions? Seeing none, thank you, Joel. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Under D, from the Personnel Director, we have a Finance Officer, MN15, it's a two-year pay lea-, uh, level, excuse me.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Questions or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. We have 911 Central Dispatch, this is an Assistant Director vacancy.
So moved.
Support. Moved and supported. Questions or discussion? Tom?
I just, uh, share with the board that Kathy Cot, or, I'm sorry, Michelle Cot, is the employee that is leaving and has become the Director of the 911 system up in the Petoskey area. It's a three-county authority.
Correct. Thank you, Tom. Chris, quick question. The two Assistant Director positions, are one of those a new position, or are you gonna have an additional employee when it's all said and done?
No, the idea is to have Michelle work alongside of the individual that we choose as the new Assistant Directors, to have some continuity for a couple of weeks-
Okay.
...before she goes on her, on her way to Petoskey.
All right, so, okay, sounds good. Thank you, sir. Any, any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Under E, we have some payables from the General Center Ridge Arms.
So moved.
Support. Moved and supported. Questions or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. From the Finance Director, or Finance Officer, we have some budget adjustments?
So moved.
Support. Moved and supported. Questions or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Number two, would the analysis of the general fund equity be motion to receive, would be in order?
So moved.
Support. Moved and supported. Questions or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Number three, we have an update regarding the Executive Director, 2007-11. Motion to receive.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Under four, we have the 2017 Budget Schedule and Calendar.
So moved.
Support. Moved and supported. Questions or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Number five, we have the Enterprise Networks Appliance Support, ISD.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Number six, we have the Uniform Federal Grant Guidance. This is-
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any questions or discussion? Kim, would this fall under you?
Yes.
Is this like a, a Gatsby requirement from the feds?
Yeah, this is a single, this is coming from the single audit-
Yeah.
...requirement. Yes, it's a requirement to update our language in this, because now we're under this new OMB, the Office of Management and Budget, two dash CFR 200 Uniform Administrative Grant Requirement. Yes.
So you just have to, I was, I was trying to figure out what-
It's new language that they're updating now, 'cause there's new, they've kinda consolidated the, there used to be seven different pronouncements, and they're putting it all together in uniform into one. So, it's a new grant requirement.
So you don't have to do any, do you have to do anything any differently?
Yeah, we do. We actually will send out a notice to all our grant people, any- Any federal dollars is really where this is highlighting and going after, so we have to make sure that we're in compliance with the new federal requirements for different items, yes.
All right, all right, thank you. Anybody else have any questions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. And do you, anybody have any referrals? Any unfinished business? Amber?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Board had previously voted on an issue related to hiring two new attorneys in the public defender's office, and at the time the issue was brought up, the Board did approve us posting the position, but not actually interviewing and hiring to fill the positions. I would be asking for approval of the Board to fill those positions so we can begin the interview process. We have received quite a few applications. We'd like to start that process, but I don't really feel comfortable interviewing the people if we are not guaranteed that we're going to be, in fact, hiring those two people to fill the positions.
I would make that motion.
Support. Moved and supported. Any questions or discussion? Commissioner Lux?
Have we approved moving forward with this whole arrangement yet?
The reorganization of the department, we're going to be doing that next month to, to put one proposal together that will deal with hiring a new director. So one of the individual attorneys that are in the office now would have to be moved to a Department Director position, which is the next step level up.
Okay, so you're just going to interview them?
Correct. We're, we're going to interview them with the authority to offer the position, but the position is just going to be the staff attorneys, as previously noted.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Amber.
Thank you.
New business. Commissioner Lux?
We have one here for the TV station in Midland, where the MCTV is conducting a sale. We'd like to authorize our staff to go over and potentially purchase a few items with a maximum of 200, or 2,000?
2,000.
$2,000 money to pick up several items, which they've already identified that we can use within our system.
You moving that?
So I'm moving.
Support. Moving and supported. Any questions or discussion? Commissioner Killig?
Yeah, I support this, but I'm curious, Nick, maybe Nick can answer this question, is that I see the, well, because he operates the equipment, that's why I ask, that the cassette recorders, is that something that, or maybe I need to go over here and ask, is that, that seems to be a bit dated?
They allow you to plug into the computer, so I can go USB through that, but we would probably use this more for like the telephone where we're going into a system like this where I can just not record it with that camera, but record it with a system like this.
Is there a way then to affordably upgrade that cassette to digital at some point in time? I mean, once you, once you have the other equipment, because the other equipment I know is important to make all this happen. That, that link between the two, I just see cassettes, you know, not being of the quality that you necessarily need and...
We could do something like this hard drive way up here and connect with that.
Okay, okay, fair enough. Thanks.
Any other questions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Anything else under new business? Well, we don't have a closed session here. Any miscellaneous, any announcements?
Move to adjourn.
Moved and supported. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Today is Tuesday, May 3rd. This is a special board meeting of the Bay County Commissioners. I'd like to call it to order. If you'd take a role, please.
Duranchuk.
Here.
Krieger.
Yes.
Begic.
Here.
Coonan.
Here.
Tilly.
Here.
Lux.
Here.
Very good. We'll stand for the invocation and then the pledge.
Heavenly Father, we come before you this afternoon, thanking you for the guidance and understanding that you have given this Board of Commissioners. Lord, we ask you again today for your help and direction to carry on to do the work that has been placed before them. May your divine providence help them to benefit every citizen of this community. In your holy name we ask this. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next on the list would be citizens' input. I don't see very many citizens. Whoop, we do have one.
Thank you.
Your name, please.
Yes, that's, okay. Laura Ogar, Director of Environmental Affairs and Community Development for Bay County. I am here happily to report that the public notice for the Army Corps of Engineers permit application for the boardwalk to the beach at Bay City State Rec Area is out for public comment. It was posted April 26th, and it is a 30-day public comment period. It is just for the boardwalk. They seem to think that the, based on the Corps' recommendation, that the beach grooming of the 670 feet should be separated, and that will come shortly afterwards. And realistically, as we've seen out there at the beach, the boardwalk is the prime consideration at this point, getting that thing built and getting that thing installed. And so they have pretty well kept on that they're pretty, shooting for Memorial Day weekend. It'll be closed, but they said they're already gearing up on things, kind of staging, so that they can be ready to go when that thing's issued.
Let me add to that. On May 9th, they will have a crew coming down from Roscommon with the equipment, and their objective is to take sand from our beach on the north end and move it to, put our sand path in for that boardwalk to go on top of. And that'll start on the 9th. We'll start grooming the beach on Friday, provided the weather's halfway decent. And the, the goal of grooming the beach before they come to, to move that sand is to collect as much sand and zebromuscle shells as possible to have a better foundation than just pure sand. Aggregates a little stronger with the zebromuscle shells on it, so we'll certainly do that for them, seeing that they're the Corps of Engineers and, and they know best for Bay County on how things should be. I'd like to also add that the Corps of Engineers will actually go out and solicit information from other groups that may not be in favor of us having access to that bay, or they have additional grooming. So if someone out there would like to step up to the plate and, and send a note to the Corps telling them that we do want our beach, that, that'll go a long ways to offset the information they'll go out and solicit. So, any questions for Laura? Thanks for your persistence.
Thank you.
We're getting there. Thank you. Anyone else from the audience, which I see no one? Yes, Commissioner Coonan?
Maybe if that's a contest on those that want it and those that don't, maybe we could put on Bay 3 TV some sort of notification to the public that they could send a letter in support of that project, because we surely don't want people to be silent that aren't aware of if their letter would be helpful in this process.
Yeah, might be even something that we could get on MLive, you know, get it out there.
Get it wherever we can.
Correct.
I'm putting together comments now, and I know Rick Finn from the city has asked to replicate our comments, and so I was going to send it out broadly. I know the Garden Club has asked to, they would, they wanted to be like letter writing months ago, and so this is a perfect time for that, because as, yes, as the chair mentioned, they will base it on, base it on public interest, weighted against any concerns they may have from resource damages. So like the US, there are other federal agencies that may be clearly weighing in here with their own written comments. So in this particular case, numbers matter. So, yeah, we're going to be broad, and we're going to be active. We've got just about a month, and we're going to solicit some letters. And with, we'll have the contact, there's certain forms you got to have, the application number that you need to include, et cetera.
Very good. Yes, Debbie?
I just wanted to offer, we'll work with Environmental Affairs and putting something on Facebook and getting it on county website so we can do our part to promote it.
Very good. Thank you. Anyone else? Commissioner Lux?
Who's actually building the boardwalk?
It would be DNR, and in fact, yeah, they're going to be, it's going to be a seasonal boardwalk now instead of a, basically a semi-permanent or permanent boardwalk that we have been proposing. The end, we always knew at the beachfront was going to be semi-permanent. It would be accessible based on the elevation of that, of that foredune, but they're going to be putting it in seasonally. I will say, an interesting point, when we first started this project in 2013 with the County Executive, Tom Hickner, agreeing to that proposal, when we did the first survey, that boardwalk was going to be 500 feet. And then, that was in 2013. And then in 2014, when we actually had a land surveyor crew out there, it was down to 420 feet. And now this, now that the DNR has kind of had to do some further kind of update their plans on recent survey, just for this particular project, it's down to 380 feet. So that's the water level coming up, dumping more sand up on the shoreline, and that distance narrowing between the edge of the day use and that foredune. So it's 380 feet now.
Yep, and with us starting it at 2013 and working all the way up to the point of getting permission, now the DNR is going to step in and save the day.
So does that mean we got more beach there? Do we get wider sand from the water?
Uh, no, the water is up, so actually there would actually be less exposed beach because you have all of their precious vegetation that's on the backside of that sand ridge.
Did they actually plant it there?
Well, they tried.
Yeah, they, right, they dug, removed sand and planted.
Right, so they actually planted there to create something that would never have been...
All right. Enough said. Let's move on to items for considerations. Commissioner Tilly, if you do the honors.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have Resolution 2016-103, recognition of the YWCA Great Lakes Bay region. I so move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion with none. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution 2016-104, acceptance of the DNR Frag Mities grant. I so move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion, I do have a question for you, Laura, if I could. I've had a, a number of individuals that live in Bay County near the Cullen River that have frag mighty issues. Is there some way for them to contact you to look and see if there would be some support to have, to hit these spots, or...
Uh, yes, they should, they should. I encourage you to encourage them to, to get ahold of me. I, I will say that this grant, under this particular grant funding source, the properties have been fairly well delineated. However, there are other, just yesterday, the DNR allowed, released another grant award. We won't necessarily get one because we're still, haven't even, you know, signed this one yet, but we will, there are other funding opportunities that come up, but it's also a matter of informing landowners what they can do, as in how to go about that process.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else with none? All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
We have Resolution 2016-105, which is to approve $2,000 to take forward on behalf of Bay County to the Midland County Television Auction. I so move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion with none. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And potentially one more, and this was on 2016-106, would it be to allow the corporate counsel to move forward with the interview process? That's what I was getting at earlier, Deanne. To move forward with the interview process to fulfill the potential vacancies at the courthouse?
You can just do it as a motion.
Okay, I'll make the motion, then we'll give it a number. Yep.
Discussion. Yes, Bob?
Yeah, is that a motion just to interview or a motion to, authorizing me to interview and offer?
Pending, pending the reassignments that come forward in next month's meeting.
The, the reassignment will just be for a Department Director head and reorganization of the department. Right now, you can still hire those attorneys to work in the existing office that we have.
Correct.
Just to film. Okay, fair enough, that's to film.
I need a second.
Second.
All right. Any other discussion with none? All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
That concludes business from the Board of Commissioners, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Tilly. We'll move into unfinished business. Is there anything we left on the table? If not, new business? Miscellaneous? Announcements? Commissioner Coonan, I think we have something coming up in June.
June the 25th, Saturday, is the 10th Annual Beach Wellness. We're going to, we've already partnered with Anne Gatsa Marhar, who runs the St. Patty's Day Race very successfully, and she's working with us, and we are also working with Y volleyball, so we hope to expand our volleyball tournament on the beach. The 5K run and the walk, 10K run, you can, you can sign up online. If you go to the BARC website, or if you're any type of runner at all, you know how to sign up. You can just, you know, electronically sign up. And I think we've raised over $100,000.
Yep.
All that money's gone to the beach for tractors, groomers, floating docks, all kinds of good stuff. So we hope that we're going to have a special pin for the 10th anniversary and shirts, and we'll have a good time out there.
Very good. Thank you. Anyone else with announcements? With that being said, I believe there is a reason for a closed session.
There is, Mr. Chair. I would request a motion to go into closed session pursuant to MCL 15.268 subsections E and H to discuss ongoing pending litigation in the matter of Luzac versus the Bay County Board of Commissioners.
So moved.
Support. Roll call, please.
Coonan.
Yes.
Herrick.
Yes.
Tilly.
Yes.
Lux.
Yes.
Duranchuk.
Yes.
Begic.
Yes.
Krieger.
Yes. He has a funny name. We will go into closed session. Mike? All right. So Amber?
Yes.
What say you?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I would request a motion to follow the recommendation of the county's attorney, Alex Baumerito.
So moved. Art?
Discussion with none. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Mikey, what is next?
Always in order. Forward.
Discussion with none. We're adjourned. Thank you.